I'm so happy today to have Brian Knotts here. This is exciting for me because you're the first Multnomah County candidate that I've had to come on here. And like much, like a lot of people in Portland, I am kind of learning, I learned that this county election is coming up in May. And I think a lot of the public doesn't really know that, but anyway, thanks for coming.
Yeah, well, thanks. Thanks for having me. And yeah, I would say a fair amount of people probably aren't aware of, of the election. I, I became, I mean, I, like you were saying before we started that you're kind of a political nerd and I've always kind of been that way. And what kind of motivate motivated me to get into this was I just wanted to, the, I was looking at Ballotpedia, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And I was looking at the last election and you know, I, it kind of reminded me that in the last election, Lori Stegman, who's the incumbent in my district, she ran unopposed.
So there's no opponent?
Yeah. And so I just, I thought this is just unacceptable. So I said, I don't know how many other people are going to run, but I'm definitely going to just at least have my name on the ballot.
Yeah.
Just so people have some kind of a choice.
Some competition. Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's what I did. And, uh, but then as I, after I did that, you know, I was getting, talking to people on X and whatnot. And they're like, well, you know, you should probably actually run.
Well, that's cool. People asking you. Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, people want, people want change.
Yeah. And tell me about, yeah, cause I, we were talking a little before we recorded about the districts. Tell me about like your district and.
Yeah. So my district is District Four.
Okay.
And it encompasses pretty much all of Multnomah County, east of, I think 148th.
Okay.
All the way to the dam.
Yeah. Which is, that's a interesting kind of geography because that's a lot of like Portland's worst problems. And then a lot of rural as well, right? Is it kind of?
Yeah. A lot of rural area. Plus it also encompasses government island for some reason.
Okay.
I don't think there's a lot of constituents there, but occasionally there are, I think, you know, starting fires and whatnot.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's cool. Um, and I wanted to say, yeah, obviously you're the first candidate I've had on here, but I'm also going to have Jesse Burke and some other county candidates. But yeah, just like this county election is huge. I am, I was telling Brian, second go, I'm just really upset with the county. I've been upset for the past year. I don't feel like they're effective. A lot of people feel like Jessica Vega Peterson is not a good leader. And so I personally really want to see change and I'm just glad to see that there's some more competition in the, in this election. And obviously the DA is a huge part of the race too.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it, I mean, we're all just kind of one piece of the puzzle here. And, and he's a very big piece.
Yeah.
And between him and the chair, yeah, there, we have failed leadership in this county. And we really need to get some, you know, part of it is just, I think a lot of people have just kind of thrown up their hands and just said, well, there's nothing I can do about it.
Yeah.
But there is something you can do about it. You can run for office. And so that's why I'm doing this is, is to try to get some kind of change, get some different voices, you know, into the, into the conversation because we haven't had that. We've just kind of had rubber stamping.
Yeah.
Whatever the craziest ideas are, we just rubber stamp them. And then when it, when it ultimately, you know, when it inevitably fails, well, what do we do now? Well, let's do more of the same.
Right. I always talk about, yeah, the monoculture of.
Yeah.
It's just the same monolithic ideation and like policy.
We haven't really had, I mean, well, I mean, there's, there's a little bit of, you know, I mean, we've seen in this past session that there has been some conflicts.
Yeah. It's kind of heating up.
Kind of good to see, but for a long time there, we didn't really have anything, any dispute about anything on the board. And not since Lonnie Roberts left a long, long time ago.
Yeah. And we were just talking before as well about, and I bring, I try, I try to bring up topical stuff. I posted a couple of days ago about the ambulance crisis, which I'm just so unhappy with what the county decided to do this past, these past few weeks. Like they basically do, did nothing. But I'm curious how you feel about that.
So, so when I, when I decided to run, we kind of announced it on Facebook and other things. And one of the people that we know out in our part of the county, she is part of a community group out there and invited me to speak to them. And they had some issues that they wanted to, to bring, bring up. And the first one, the most important one that they wanted to talk about, because they're kind of, they're kind of tied in somewhat with the, the fire, fire department there. And, and they was this ambulance thing. And they said, you know, this is just crazy. Multnomah County has this rule that's unique on the west coast, as far as, as far as I know, that requires there to be two paramedics for any particular kinds of calls.
Any given ambulance, right?
Uh, I think there are exceptions for some types of calls, but if it's a kind of a, a certain level of urgency, they have to have two paramedics. And so the result is, is that they don't have enough paramedics for, because of staffing problems. And so what happens is you get really long response times. And this, there's a simple way to solve this today.
Right.
And that is to get rid of the rule.
Yeah.
And allow, allow, allow the people who are actually doing the job to do it.
Cause as far as I know, like you pointed out, I've heard most, if not all counties around Multnomah have this one and one model.
Yeah.
Where's one EMT, one paramedic, and it works just fine. And you know?
Works fine. And this, and I think this group was particularly interested in this because it especially affects rural areas.
So they're just long, even longer response times out there?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so it really impacts us. And they're, and they're, the, the confusing thing is there, it doesn't seem to be any real reason to have this.
Right. Right. The only, yeah. The only thing I can think, and my friend Kim McGar pointed this out yesterday on Twitter, is that, that you, there's some union that has a county tie, paramedics union or something like that. And that, I was like, I've never heard of that. But I could see that being a possibility, I guess.
Could see that, but I haven't heard that.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything from the union people that this is something that they're.
Protecting.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that's really what the issue is.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it could be, but.
I mean, I'm right there with you. Everyone's kind of scratching their heads and being like, why, what's the holdup here? Like, why?
It just seems like there's this, just no, you know, we, we have this rule, we put it in place. And so, no, we're not changing it.
Right. And you know, my, I posted about this because I was just furious when I saw that. But, but yeah, they voted this past week to pay a consultant, like $165,000 to study this. And you know, my whole.
No study is, is, is needed because everybody already knows what the issues are.
Yeah.
So there, we're just going to just dump more money down a hole.
We're making somebody pretty wealthy by doing this, you know?
You know, I'm sure they'll do a good job, but the job doesn't need to be done because it's already done.
Yeah.
We already know what the issues are and how to solve it.
And my, and yeah, I always, I don't know. I talk a lot about urgency. Some people feel like that's a BS thing in Multnomah County. But I'm like, how more urgent can you get with an issue like this?
Oh, yeah. I mean.
I just don't get it, but.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, you pile this on top of measure 110 and it's just disaster.
Yeah. I was going to ask you how you, how do you feel about what they did with the state legislature this week with that? Kind of rolling back?
Yeah. I think it's a step forward. I've heard some noise about, well, they only did this to stop us from repealing the thing entirely. And I don't have the specifics in front of me to know what they did and what they didn't do. But.
There's good pieces to it.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's at least better than where we were.
Yeah. That's kind of how I feel. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, people kind of regret, a lot of people regret voting for that.
Absolutely. Yeah. I'm one of them. Yeah.
I, I, I'm, I'm proud to say I voted against that because.
That's good. You're, you're a smart guy. Yeah.
Well, I just, I kind of, I kind of knew where this was going. And we already were seeing some pretty bad problems at that time. So.
Yeah. And I keep beating this drum, but a lot of that is funded and was helped by the Drug Policy Alliance, which, you know, hopefully I'm trying to educate people on them because they're still fighting this with money and throwing money around where they try to, and Portland is kind of the guinea pig for the Drug Policy Alliance and try new policies like this. And, and they've been pretty successful. So.
Yeah. They've been successful in getting their ideas implemented.
Yeah.
Not successful in making, making life better for anyone.
Right. Right. Yeah. That's definitely what I mean. Um, okay. I was going to ask you, what are, what are your top three issues? I mean, I know we just talked about some of them, but for the county, like, is there like a top three?
Yeah. I'd say there's, there's, there's that. That's definitely one of them. The, I mean, the ambulance especially and then drugs. The way that we're dealing with homelessness in the county, I think really needs to be reevaluated. You want something to study, there's something to study.
Yeah.
And we don't seem to be studying it. We just seem to be outsourcing it to, you know, there's, I mean, I saw this, I can't remember the, the number now, but somebody did, somebody looked at how many nonprofits there are.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
In the Portland metropolitan area. And it was just a mind boggling number.
And I, we did, I did a panel episode on nonprofits on this show. And, and this could be wrong because I did a quick Google before we did the show, but I Googled it and there was like 15,000 just in the Portland metro area. And I'm sure a lot of those are defunct and, but there's just so many, like it's astounding.
And I mean, there's nothing wrong with the idea of not, you know, some of the nonprofits do great work. And, and I wouldn't want to paint them with a broad brush as well. Everybody's just out for the grift, right? But there are some, I'm, I'm convinced that there are some people that are involved in the nonprofit industry, primarily as a way to make money.
Yeah.
And, and the county is happily providing that money.
Yeah.
That's why one of my main issues is to audit the whole kind of.
Infra, or that whole system of.
Yeah. The whole system of nonprofits that are funded by the county.
Yeah. That's a great idea. Yeah.
My, my kind of cutoff level is, you know, if you're, if you're getting $20,000 per year or more from the county, you should be audited.
That seems like a good number. Yeah.
And then we can, we can evaluate what, you know, how much is the county paying? What services is this nonprofit providing? And are they doing so effectively? And could we do it more effectively by insourcing that into the county?
So, yeah. Well, it's funny because I was just going to point out, yeah, my, the whole reason I did that episode and my, what I am interested in is like, yeah, the government increasingly relying on these nonprofits. Cause it's just become such an easy solution for them. And then, and I think there's no expectation out of that. They just kind of.
Yeah. And you know, I also look at it as kind of a, you know, we have county employees that are in a union. And I just kind of wonder sometimes, is this kind of an end run around the union? Because I don't know, I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know what the employment status is of these people that work for these nonprofits. But you know, you could potentially have kind of a labor issue there as well.
Yeah. Yeah. It's definitely, I don't know. Yeah. I think it needs more scrutiny. And I like your idea for auditing, at least with the county.
Yeah. Now, I mean, whether that can actually happen with the chair in place, I don't know.
Yeah.
But at least I would like to propose it and see, see if I can get other commissioners on board.
Yeah. Cause I did want to say, um, you know, I mentioned I'm having some other county people on. And, you know, I'm not a fan of the county leadership, but I do think there's a couple of good commissioners in there. And I think hopefully there's a growing group of people that are more skeptical.
Sometimes people can be convinced as well, you know? I mean, if people are open minded enough, you know, we maybe bring up some new ideas and, and you know, they may change their mind about it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's possible for sure. Um, okay. Let's see. I wanted to mention, are you adjacent to Clackamas County? Are you, because I'm not even like that familiar with where that district is and.
Well, District Four, it's, I mean, yes, it's, it's, one boundary is, is Clackamas County.
Okay.
The other is, like I said, 148th for the most part.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
The other is the Columbia River.
Okay.
And then the other is Hood River County line.
Okay. I was going to ask because I'm, I had Ben West on here as a friend of mine, the commissioner in Clackamas County. And I just like a lot of what they're doing over there. And I was just curious if you see that. Is there anything like Clackamas is doing that you like and would like to see Multnomah doing?
I mean, their general approach is better, I think, because they don't seem to have the same level of ideological capture as we have here in Multnomah County. So, yeah, I mean, I'm all in favor of looking at what other counties have done and picking the best ideas from them.
Yeah.
As I said, in one of my releases a while ago, you know, Coos County, I believe they have, have made some noise about the, some of the decisions, the court decisions that have really kind of put a stranglehold on the ability of counties to deal with homelessness.
Right. Right.
And, and you know, they at least came out with, I think it was some kind of like a resolution or something. Now, what I want to do, and this is one of my other issues, is to join a lawsuit that challenges Martin versus Boise or the Grants Pass case.
Right.
It's got to happen. It's, it's going to happen eventually.
Yeah.
And I think that has to be a priority instead of, you know, I mean, currently the county is involved in suing, I believe, energy companies.
Yeah. Yeah.
This.
Tech companies. They do.
This is the problem. This is not, okay, whatever the, the merits of the idea are, this is beyond the county's competency. It's, it's not something that the county should be dealing with. This is a state and primarily a national issue.
Yeah.
So I want to, I just want to get the county away from getting tied up with things that are really not anything the county can do anything about.
That's a good point. Yeah.
The county has plenty of stuff to do. How about fixing the roads?
Yeah. At the local level. Yeah.
You know, I mean, have you driven around this county? The roads, I mean, yeah, like Flavell here.
Yeah. Well, it's funny because I.
That's city of Portland. That's, that's.
Yeah. I literally, I was telling Brian, I, I've done two episodes today, but literally my guest before this was saying the same exact thing.
Yeah.
Cause you both drove here, but, um, and you know, I drove on this every day and I totally feel it. But yeah, it's, I felt that way for a long time in my area of just like basic infrastructure stuff. It's just not even there.
Happened about, I want to say 15 years ago. And I, I think the head of Multnomah County Roads retired. And ever since then, things have gotten bad. And it's not, I'm not necessarily blaming the people that are in charge there. I think it's also a de-emphasis on.
Car use and.
Yeah. I mean, kind of.
Yeah.
There, there's also been kind of a, a de-emphasis on infrastructure in the more rural parts of the county.
Okay. Yeah.
Because we've seen it for many years, uh, where I live. And it's, it's just terrible and it's unsafe. You know, we talk about ambulances, public safety. If, if the roads are almost impassable, how do you provide public safety to the people that live in rural areas?
Yeah. That's a good point. Yeah.
And that's, that's one of the, that's kind of one of my other sort of issues is, is just rural Multnomah County. It gets overlooked.
I bet. Yeah.
It really gets overlooked.
Cause I think one of the things that like people don't understand how big Multnomah County is, like it, they often just think of Portland and, uh, but it's a lot bigger than that.
Yeah. We have multiple areas, rural areas where there are some people living. East County is the most, you know, where's, where most, but there's also, you know, up, uh, if you, if you head up US 30 towards St. Helens, there's some rural areas there that are within Multnomah County.
Yeah.
So, uh, and, and, and yeah, they're especially affected by this de-emphasis on, on road maintenance.
Yeah. No, it's a good point. Cause we were, I was just talking about this with my previous guest too. And you know, in Portland, that's a lot of that's P-Bot, the city.
Yeah.
But I, I would imagine when you get out of the city, it's the county or who, you know, somebody else is doing the roads.
Yeah. I mean, you have, you have some roads that, most roads are going to be county roads.
Gotcha.
And then there's a few that are ODOT.
Yeah. I know 82nd, I think ODOT just turned over, over to the city over here, which is a weird thing, but, um, but yeah, it is, um, it's frustrating for somebody like me too. Cause I was just saying how, you know, we're having this new city election in Portland and part of what they're doing to pay for that.
Yeah.
Is siphoning money from all the bureaus, including P-Bot to pay for the transition. So it's like, we don't even have money to fix the roads or any of that stuff. But it's a mess.
I mean, that, that's kind of outside of my.
I know. Yeah. It's not your territory, but.
It, it seemed like an odd decision.
Yeah. Um, let's see. Um, how do you feel about, you know, if you were elected about Jessica Vega Peterson? I know a lot of people mentioned a recall. I don't know how possible that is, but like.
Well.
Are you a supporter? Do you?
I mean, recalling someone.
It's expensive, right?
It's, it's expensive. It takes a long time. And by the time you, you know, at this point, by the time you would do that, she would be up for election anyway.
Another round. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I, I don't know if she's term limited yet.
Yeah. I'm actually not sure either.
No, I think she has one more.
Okay.
So, yeah. Um, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I think, I think it's much more constructive to try to work with her to the degree possible and try to change her mind on some issues. And then, you know, barring that, well, then you, you know, then someone runs against her.
Yeah.
And, and tries, you know, I mean, you know, try, that was tried last time, didn't work, but.
Yeah. Well, for the, for the, I'm kind of in this crowd too. For the laymans out there, like how does it, how does a typical county vote work? Like, you know, you have the commissioner's vote and then can she veto? Or does she count as a regular vote or?
Yeah. I think, I think the main power that she has is controlling the agenda.
Gotcha.
And.
The whole county agenda.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, people, I mean, there's still votes, you know, so, but if everybody kind of votes with her, then that's a lot of power.
Yeah.
So, you know, to control the agenda and to, and to have that power. So, uh, yeah, but it's, I don't believe that she has some kind of presidential power as far as I know. It's just, you know.
Gotcha. Yeah. I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to learn more about how the county works because I think one of the problems I talk about here a lot on the show is people in Portland especially, it's all just one thing. They like to blame the city for a lot of what the county does and vice versa. And so I think, I don't know, I'm trying to educate people, including myself about more of this stuff, but, um, it's a Byzantine system up here, you know? I don't know. Hopefully it's more clear where you live.
Yeah. Well, the, uh, I mean, the county is, is not set up in any particularly odd way. The city of Portland, yes, it had a kind of a, I don't know, some people say antiquated form of government.
The old commission form.
Yeah. Uh, where you had individual city commissioners controlling particular bureaus and.
Yeah. They'll get assigned bureaus and.
Yeah. Yeah. Which is a bit odd and probably worked better a hundred years ago.
Yeah. Which is kind of as far as I know, when it started.
County is run like a typical county.
Any county. Yeah.
And you have a professional administrator that, that kind of deals with the nitty gritty of, of running the county.
Okay.
So, uh, the commissioners are there to set policy, make decisions. And that's what, you know, we're, we're just making the wrong decisions.
Yeah.
Is currently, that's what the problem is.
Okay. Um, I was going to ask you about the Joint Office of Homeless Services. Obviously we talked a little about how we're probably in total agreement with how, I don't know, the county deals with homelessness. They have this huge unspent funding that barely gets used.
Yeah.
But I'm curious about JOHS because I had a city council candidate on here who's on a budget advisory committee for, for Joint Office Homeless Services. But I'm just curious how you feel about that. And I personally am like, why do we even have this? It just seems really ineffective.
I mean, I really would like to, I, I want to go back to the drawing board essentially. What we're doing is not working in any way, shape or form, and things are just getting worse and worse all the time. You know, I saw that they cleaned up 33rd.
Yeah. They'll do a sweep now and then. Yeah.
And so it's, it's pretty immaculate. But then, you know, you go of a few, a couple of miles over and oh, well, that's where everybody went. You know, we, we have to understand, I mean, this, it's a very complex issue. And it's not just a county issue or a city issue. It's a state issue. It's a national issue. And to some degree, it's a world issue.
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't look at the, the issue as if, well, you know, we just, we have these people here and we have to just build them houses. Because, you know, we're not in a vacuum.
Right.
Okay. So when you provide things, especially without any kind of strings attached, what you're going to get is a lot more people coming. So what you have to have is, you have to have, what I say is the carrot and the stick. Okay? So you, you, you want to care for people. You want to help people out of their, out of their situation. But you have to do it in a way where you're actually getting them to improve their lives. So.
Cause they're not going to get in that house and magically change their way of life if they're an addict.
No, no. Because, and, and, yeah, because when you're in that lifestyle, or it's not really a lifestyle, but it's, it's, you know, it's.
It's a condition or yeah.
Condition. Yeah.
Addiction. Yeah.
Yeah. Addiction. And so it's, they're not making a conscious decision to, you know, cut the metal out of the wall or whatever it is to sell, to get drugs.
Or, yeah, or I was gonna say up here, they recently, there's a, you know, story that's kind of going viral because there's the downtown Safeway in Applied Pantry. The governor took the rare move of saying, you can't return cans here anymore because what's popular up here is people turn cans in and then buy fentanyl.
Oh, yeah.
From the can money. But it's just incredibly easy to buy. And.
Yeah. I mean.
It's hard to interrupt that.
Yeah. And you kind of, you kind of, you know, it's, that's a kind of a, you know, the whole can return thing, you know?
The bottle bill.
Yeah. The bottle bill, like, you know, 50 years ago or whatever. And I just think, you know, they could never have imagined.
No.
Where that would lead.
You're totally right about that. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. It's, I mean, and that's, that's one of the things about policies. There's so often there's unintended consequences. And they may not happen tomorrow and they may not happen next week, but they sometimes happen 50 years later.
Yeah.
And we're kind of dealing with that now. So, you know, that's why I guess it's kind of important to always be reviewing. Hey, where, where is this, this policy that we have in place that we like for a number of reasons? Are there any problems with it? Can we make any adjustments to it? To, to kind of, you know, stop some of the, the negative side effects before they happen or before they get too bad.
Yeah. Kind of re-taking a fresh look at it in today's environment. Yeah. I'm glad you brought up the, those homeless court cases because I had Eli Arnold on here. He's also a city council candidate, but he's also a police officer in downtown Portland. And he pointed this out in a way that I never thought of, of like, it is a, I'm trying to remember the circuit court that that's involved. Both those cases are in, it's the whole west coast.
Yeah. Ninth, ninth.
Ninth Circuit. Yeah. Thanks. Um, but I never thought about that of like, yeah, it's a ninth circuit problem, like a large percentage of it because of the cases you mentioned. Which, I'm trying to phrase it in the right way. Don't allow police to do anything about camping.
Pretty much. I mean, what it says is that you cannot stop someone from camping on public property unless you provide them a place to live.
Yeah. Or something.
Pretty much. That's essentially what it is. And that's not realistic for some of the reasons that I've already stated. If you, if you tell a municipality that you have to do that, well, what's going to happen is people from other parts of the. well, what's going to happen is people from other parts of the country are going to, uh, you know, come and, and.
Yeah.
Try to avail themselves of that. And, and so essentially what happens is basically you're saying that you have to let people, uh, camp on public property. And that's not really a productive.
Yeah, well, it's just, I don't know.
Legal theory.
Yeah, and anyone that travels, I would, it's like, why, you know, the homelessness exists almost everywhere in the US, but it's why you don't have the same level of problems as of the West Coast, I would, you know, it seems like.
Yeah, that's probably part of it.
Um.
And, and then, you know, I mean, Portland has this unique kind of, you know, reputation. And, and that's part of what draws people here, right, is, hey, you know, I can come here and do whatever I want.
Yeah.
And nobody cares.
Yeah, and it, it kinda, it does kind of bug me, because people, um, like to feel like any state's the same and I always, I don't know, I just immediately think of one ten as part of that, of like, yeah, well, you can do any drug that you want, you know?
I do believe that was a big part of what really kind of made things explode.
Right. Just made it more explosive, yeah, um.
But, but there are ways of dealing with this, even, even under the current constraints, uh, you know, I, I was in Honolulu, uh, a couple of years ago and they had, they had a, a, a problem.
Yeah.
During the pandemic and they had an explosion of camp, camping on public property and that sort of thing. And by the time I was there in May of twenty twenty-two, it was almost completely gone.
Wow.
So, you know, I think maybe they have some ideas.
Yeah.
That we could talk to them about and, and see, see what we could do.
Yeah.
Because they definitely, they definitely improved the situation.
Yeah, made some progress and, yeah, yeah. Yeah, definitely be nice to see you around here. Um, tell me about your Northwest story, like, you grew up here? Did you move out here at some point or?
Well, uh, I, I'm kind of a newcomer, because I didn't come here until nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, well, that's still a pretty good amount of time, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I still think of myself as kind of a newcomer.
Yeah, yeah.
So, no, I went to, I went to university down in Humboldt County.
Okay.
And, uh, when you go, when you, when you go to Humboldt State, you basically have two options. You're gonna, you're gonna find a job either in the Bay Area or in Portland.
Okay.
And so I, I end up opting for Portland. Uh, because you, you're not gonna stay in Mul- in Humboldt County, because there.
There's not much.
There isn't really any employment there, other than there's a few government jobs and, uh, you know, or you can, I don't know, sell donuts or something.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there's just not, there isn't a lot there.
Not a lot of career options.
No, no. So, uh, so yeah, ended up, I, I moved first to Milwaukee, uh, not exactly Milwaukee, but kind of just really only like, I don't know, probably a mile and a half from here.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, kind of what we used to call deep southeast.
Hmm.
And.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, it, uh, and, and I ended up buying a house in Multnomah County.
Okay.
Uh, you know, in Corbett and, uh, commuted for many years to downtown Portland and other, uh, worked for a while in Vancouver.
Okay, yeah. Uh. How was, was that commute crazy back, or was it super easy back in the day?
It wasn't too bad.
Okay.
Really, uh, yeah, not, not really that bad, especially when I worked in Vancouver, because then I wasn't really like hitting the traffic. I was going against.
Right, right. That's what I do. I work up there and it's still not that bad, but Vancouver is growing quite a bit in the past few years.
Yeah, it is, and it's, it's acquiring some of the problems that we have.
That's true, yeah.
So, yeah.
It's just a matter of time maybe, but, you know, um.
But yeah, I just, uh, so I, I, I worked for other people for a long time and then I kind of started a business with a couple of other guys over in Vancouver and then, uh, we kind of parted ways. I recently, I started my own, uh, consultancy and, uh, that's, that's what I'm doing now.
Nice, very cool. Um, yeah, I'd just like to ask everyone's Northwest stories as they come up in here. Um, all right, I have some goofy questions here. I ask everyone these. I hope they're okay. Yeah, they're mostly food related. I was gonna ask you too, you're not related to like Knott's Berry Farms, right? Like those guys?
They're, they're, you know, I mean, you know, people have these stories in their families, right?
Yeah.
So, and you never really know, well, is that really true? But the story in our family is that there was a dispute, you know, the, the Knotts family is mostly from West Virginia.
Okay.
And, uh, there was allegedly a land dispute and the, uh, one of the parties decided to move to California and he was so angry that he dropped the S off his name. Cause they're not.
Gotcha.
And, uh, and, and so that's allegedly the connection there.
I did, I'm surprised there's an actual story involved in that. That's cool. I didn't even think about the S. I, I got the, I got it, I was way off.
Yeah, if you look at it, it's, it's not apostrophe S.
It's a, yeah, it's part of the name.
So, yeah, so it's, I, and so I don't know the truth of that.
That's okay. Um, before I ask these other ones, do you have a favorite, uh, what's your absolute favorite thing about the Northwest?
Well, you know, just the natural beauty. It's, it's a, it really is a, a beautiful place to live. And, you know, we, we have some big cities, but so much of our, uh, Pacific Northwest is still wide open and unpopulated and.
Kind of unspoiled.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, you know, you can be in Portland and hear the noise and everything and just kind of get, uh, I don't know, you know, get a little disillusion maybe, but then, you know, you, uh, even within the city, there's places you can go, you know, go to the grotto, go up the elevator and it's just, just beautiful places to, to be, you know?
Um, I was just thinking about that. Anyway, um, all right, if you're parking in a spot, this is one of my goofy questions, if you're parking in like a normal painted line spot, not like a street spot, do you pull in or do you back in?
Oh, pull in.
Okay, yeah, I mean. Like most people do.
Yeah, e- except on, uh, First Avenue.
Okay.
There's, it actually tells you to back in.
Really?
Yeah.
Downtown Portland, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, that's interesting, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's like a row of angle parking there and it says back in only.
That is hilarious, cause I ask everyone this question. I've never heard that. That's funny.
Yeah.
Um, I'll have to find like a photo or go check it out, but that's, that's hilarious. I, I have recently started backing in, but most of the time I pull in, just like you do, like a normal person.
Yeah.
Um, what I was thinking a sec-
I don't wanna lose the vote of the back in people.
Oh, yeah, they're, everyone's, you know, equal parking, you know, whatever, um, so maybe you park both ways, you know? Um, I was thinking a second ago, how do you feel? There's been talk, I think this is maybe in the legislature about kind of messing with the urban growth boundary, unlike what we were just talking about. And to build more housing is the theory, but, um, I'm curious, do you have feelings one way or the other about that? Cause you were just talking about how unspoiled, you know, a lot of the state is.
Yeah, but I mean, urban growth boundary, you're talking about relatively small amounts of land percentage wise of the, of the whole.
Estate.
State.
Yeah.
You know?
It's mostly around Multnomah County.
But, I mean, realistically, if you want to allow people to come here, uh, and you want to have population growth.
Hmm.
I mean, that's, that's a whole another, a whole separate issue, right? But if you want that, people have to live somewhere.
Hmm.
And so we, it's inevitable that we have to increase the urban growth boundary, so there's places to build houses.
Yeah, I'm kind of of that, of that mindset too. I don't.
I mean, there are some people that, you know, they, oh, no, we just need to densify. Okay, well, uh, we can do that to some degree. Uh, but not everybody is willing to live in that kind of a, you know, like high-rise condo or something like that and, and not everybody can live in that kind of a, of a place, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to, we're going to need the land for housing.
Yeah, well, it's a good point, thinking about it that way, and also I was thinking, I could be way wrong about this, but I also think there's, it's hard to attract builders that wanna just build that type of housing as opposed to, you know, suburban or other types of housing, but, um, but yeah, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a place for all those kinds of housing.
Hmm, um, okay, back to these goofy. Um, let's say you're getting ice cream at, I don't know, what's up, is there a good Corbett ice cream place?
We don't really have a lot of businesses at Corbett, but.
I was gonna say Salt and Straw, but I don't know. Let's say you're going into an ice cream place.
I've never gone to Salt and Straw.
That's okay, um.
I, I, I mean, I walk past it when I go to.
Yeah.
Saint Anori.
Let's just say a Baskin Robbins or something, or I don't know. Um, you go waffle cone, regular cone or a cup?
Oh, well, you know, I mean, I think, I think I'm kind of indecisive between the waffle cone and the regular.
Okay, okay. The waffle cones are great. I mean, smell them coming in.
Yeah, yeah, I do like them, so I probably would lean toward that.
Okay, good choice. Um, all right, are you crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Or maybe you don't like peanut butter?
I, you know, when I was a kid, I always wanted the crunchy kind, but now I just eat the smooth kind.
Okay.
That Adams stuff, you know?
Adams, yeah, Adams is good. Um, that's a good, interesting, I've never had anyone answer that way, cause you're kind of both, or you used to like crunchy, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't dislike crunchy. It's just, I don't know, I, I, I don't eat a whole lot of peanut butter, but when I do, it's usually smooth.
Okay, and you go, do you like the no stir or the oil stir kind?
I always get the kind I gotta stir.
Okay. I just keep adding questions to this peanut butter thing, but, um, but yeah, I'm crunch, I like crunchy, no stir, and I know that's weird. I was just actually asking my last guest, they didn't used to have no stir, right? Like when I was growing up, I don't think they, I think it was all oil.
Yeah, I think, I think it has to do with like.
Palm oil or something.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, we've kind of gone more towards natural, uh, products, right? And, and the old stuff, I mean, who knows what was in that?
Yeah. Yeah, it was a different.
But it tasted good, so it, you know, we didn't really care at the time.
Yeah, yeah. Um, cool, yeah, is there anything else you wanna talk about before we wrap it up here?
Uh, well.
And where can people go to find you? What's your website and stuff?
My, my website is knotts four, number four, uh, multco.com.
Okay.
So they can go there and they can look at my issues and, uh.
Can they donate there too, or?
They can.
Okay.
There's a donate button and, uh, they're certainly welcome to do that if they wanna do.
And I, yeah, I tell everyone, I'll, I'll give you a donation, anyone that comes on here, I'll donate to, um, are, are they doing, they don't do the match thing, cause all the city candidates that come in here, they have this crazy nine time.
Yeah, no, that's a city of Portland thing.
Okay.
So, so no, there's no matching, uh, but what we do have is we have a limit of, I think, five hundred and thirty-two dollars per individual per cycle.
Okay, interesting. That's a weird, yeah.
Yeah, and there were some other things that, that were put in place, uh, but they did not survive a court challenge.
Okay.
Was that you could not spend more than a certain amount to support a candidate independently.
Okay.
Well, that obviously, uh, did not survive the court challenge, because, uh, under the current legal, uh, rules, uh, you, you, you can't limit someone's, uh, free speech, basically.
Right, right. Actually, I just thought of another question I was gonna ask you, um, cause I just learned about this this last week. I, there's a bill going through the Oregon Legislature now, which, as far as I know, will require candidates, I think of any kind in Oregon, to disclose if they're using like ChatGPT or some kind of AI on, um, on any, I think, releases that they do. And I, what caught my attention was somebody posted about this saying like, they need to differentiate between, uh, like deep fake imagery stuff, like fake images and like press releases. Cause you could see it getting really difficult to, you know, any candidate puts a press release out and they probably might use ChatGPT to kind of help them clean that up. Um, and under this bill, I think you'd have to disclose like, hey, this was partially written by ChatGPT. I'm just curious, like, do you have any feelings about, about that or like?
I, I hadn't really thought about that before. I, I, yeah, I suppose that somebody might be using that, but, uh, to me, I, I don't thi- yeah, I, I don't know about disclosing that, that's.
It seems hard to do, right?
Yeah, I mean, huh, yeah, how are you gonna enforce that, but, but also just, you know, that, that almost gets into the area of, I mean, you could even get into like ADA stuff.
Hmm.
It's, right, in some way, uh, if someone's using something for assistance.
Right, right.
It's like, oh, you have to.
Helping them out, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, that doesn't sound like a good idea to me.
Yeah, I was just, I just learned about this week, I was curious. I was asking the previous candidate too about that, but, um, but cool, yeah.
But my, I, I will, I will say that my releases are not AI generated.
That's good, that's good, yeah. I'm the same way, like I, most people my age use it all the time. I'm like the opposite. I, I use it like rarely if I have to. Um, I just don't really like, you know, the stuff that it spits out is really not very human sounding and, um.
Yeah.
And, and I'm just, I don't know, I like writing stuff anyway, so, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm old fashioned when it comes to that. I, I don't use that.
Yeah, well, it's good to hear, I guess, yeah. You don't have to worry about this bill if it passes, so.
Yeah, well, there you go, so I'm, I'm insulated, so.
Cool, and, uh, yeah, I was gonna say, what are your socials if people wanna follow? Is it the same brand?
Uh, so I'm on X, formerly Twitter, uh, uh, just Brian Knotts. Uh, I am also on Facebook, but not really. I, I don't really use it.
Yeah.
So, uh, really, the, the main place to get i- is, uh, X slash Twitter.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah.
Cool, yeah, that's how I found you, so, yeah, thanks so much for coming and, yeah, we'll have to do this again sometime, maybe if you wanna come back.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Brian.